I call Willow's Planning Commission Regular Meeting July 17th, 2024 to order at 6:00 PM. Roll call?
President?
Here?
Here.
We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Well. The flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, the United States, one nation, and one God.
Any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Minutes approval? Recommended action approved minutes of May 15th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Contact Amos Hoover City Clerk at Hoover@cityofwillows.org. I do have a change to the minutes for May 15th as I was actually present. Okay, item six, public hearing. All matters in this section of the agenda are formal public hearing.
Let's, uh...
We need to take action.
We need to approve the minutes.
Yeah, the minutes and then also open it up to public comment.
On non-agendized.
On non-agendized.
So can I motion to approve the corrected minutes?
I'll second it. Minutes approved for May 15th, 2024.
Yes, we'll open it up for public comment for anything that's not on the agenda at this time, just general public comment for non-agendized items.
I open up this meeting for public comment on any item not on the agenda. Can I back up and read item five?
Yes, yep.
Public comment and consent calendar forum. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are approved by one motion and vote unless commission members or the plant city planner first request that a matter be removed for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing to address the commission concerning consent calendar items are regarding or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the chairman or commission members and not to staff or the audience. By state law, the commission is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have any documentation that you would like to distribute to the commission, please mail it to the city planner at 201 North Lassen Street, Willow's, California, 959-88, or email it to B Turner at cityofwillows.org. So I do redo the minute approval and we have to vote on that.
Yeah, you do need to vote.
To approve the consent calendar, I believe, would be.
So motion to approve the minutes again?
Motion to, you would make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Go. Public hearing. All matters in this section of the agenda are formal public hearings and will be acted on individually. Once the chair opens the public hearing, members of the public may request to speak. When you are called on by the chair, please state your name clearly for the audio recording. If you have any documentation that you would like to be distributed to the commission, please give it to the city planner for distribution. Item A, minor use permit, file number UP-24-02, West Sycamore Street and North Plumas. Recommended action, staff recommends the commission receive the staff report, attachments discussed, hold the public hearing, and upon conclusion, consider adoption, consider adoption of the attached resolution. Contact Brian Turner, city planner, B Turner at cityofwillows.org.
Thank you. Hey, this is the, as you stated, use permit number 24-02 for a mobile food facility located at North, at West Sycamore and North Plumas. And there's an aerial photo of the occasion and you can see it's a vacant lot next to the post office. The, the site is currently vacant. The applicant proposes to install a food trailer and... Nope. Okay, go to the next slide. Keep going through.
Go forward.
Going forward. Okay, so it is in the central commercial zone, not the entryway zone. Um, that's an error in the PowerPoint, but the staff report is correct. Uh, the permitted uses in the commercial, central commercial are food, catering shops and residential. And use permit with a use permit, a conditional use permit, a mobile business operations is an approved use. Approved. There's a picture of the vacant lot and stands today. There is the food trailer information. We can go back to any of these if you need more information. And pictures of the actual trailer itself. Now, you did hear this op, uh, item on May 15th, the planning commission meeting. It was continued at that date to provide additional information, including additional conditions and ensure that the project was noticed properly. The project has been noticed properly. That was, that has been followed up on, so all legal requirements have been met with regard to noticing. Uh, we added some conditions. To the extent feasible, applicant will comply with the downtown design guidelines. That trash and refuse will be removed daily. That the project will return to planning commission after one year for annual review. And the condition, the commission may require additional reviews. That all structures be removed within 30 days of business closure should the business close. That the facility shall operate in accordance with local laws. That any ADA requirement shall be enforced at the building permit stage should a building permit be required. Changes in hours, days or operating procedures must be reported to the community development department. Any sub consultants and contractors shall have valid business licenses. Generator shall meet air quality standards and noise standards. And the restroom shall be maintained in a clean manner and screened from public view. Additionally, there was an ABC condition that was misleading and hindering. So here is a picture of the potential site. The, the short term for the covered eating area, there is a handicap parking on the side and a food truck in the middle of a concrete pad. And then in the future, should the, uh, their, their vision be realized, they do intend on putting a future building there with the possible meat market commissary, possibly a residential use on top. That would also still require planning commission review. So you're not authorizing that today. Um, if, if they were to operate and decide to do that in the future, that'd be a different application. They do have a current food permit. Um, they will be at, uh, putting concrete in on a 30 by 50, one 30 foot by 150 foot pad. Uh, this is the, you know, the example of the customer sitting area. And all the generator information. As far as landscaping goes, they're going to be putting planter boxes around the carport. Uh, they're going to put up trellis bushes to hide the restroom facility. Uh, I mentioned the concrete pad. And a landscaper will be performing bi-weekly ground maintenance, removing two trees that are in the middle of the lot and maintaining curb appeal. Uh, handicap accessibility will be accessed through the concrete ground, tucking ground. Uh, the restroom will be provided through a toilet rental and be approximately 50 feet away, tucked away behind the bush, trellis and under a tree. And, uh, parking will be available through Sycamore and Plumas Streets. It is in the parking exempt, uh, section of the downtown. As I mentioned, the future plan to set up electrical sewer and water utilities and build a brick and mortar. So there is a planning commission resolution. Recommend that you put, conduct the public hearing, that you find the application exempt from CEQA. Uh, that you find it, if you find it consistent with the general planning municipal code, you may adopt the resolution, subject to the decisions of approval found in your packet. I'm available for any questions and the applicant is, I believe, present on Zoom if you have any questions directly to them.
Not this time. Did we ever, well, maybe not. Can you hear me? Yeah. Um, did we clarify if, uh, they were going to be using a porta potty rental or like something a little bit more?
It's, it's a porta potty rental.
They're proposing putting like a trellis around, around the porta potty, I believe, right Byron? And doing some sort of plants and on the trellis to kind of make it less, uh, less of an eyesore, I guess you can say, than the, than seeing just the blue.
Yeah, in the downtown district, there are standards about making, you know, shielding where you can shield it. So that is the proposal is to shield it with, uh, trellises with vegetation.
I open the pub, public hearing at 6:12.
Uh, did like it recorded, uh, for, for everybody to be able to do, yep. You don't have to, they like you to state your name, but you don't have to do that, but if you can step to the mic with public comment.
Did I read that? I read it already. All matters in this section.
It's open in public hearing. I believe she's open it in public hearing, yeah.
Hi, my name is Jana Smith. I own a house within the limits of this proposed, um, structure. I have a question about the parking on that slide. Is the parking coming in from the alley and going off on Plumas Street? That's what it looks like, or is the parking along the street?
There is parking on the street. Can we get the picture up? Parking is not, I would say that parking is not, uh, parking is not required.
Yeah.
Um, by the code, but I believe based on comments of the planning commission, um, they've decided to provide parking.
Keep going. That right there.
This is a future plan.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay, yeah, this, this is not the configuration that they would have.
That would be for the brick and mortar?
Yes.
Okay, so that was my first question. I applaud the campus family for wanting to invest in our, in our community. But I respectfully represent others and we feel it's an inappropriate place for a food truck. It, no matter what kind of a food truck it is, is, is that the, is that the future that we want for the downtown area of our town? I applaud that they want to put something brick and mortar there in the future. Okay, but for, I, I mean, this is not like the other food trucks who have businesses around. This, this is a residence. These are homes around it. And so I'm also not that happy that there's a trading post at the old title company building. This was a professional business area in the past. And I know that these lots have been empty for a long time, but it's tough to see where the direction we're going. And after I left the last planning commission meeting, I went to the city council meeting to hear what they had to say about the focus of where our town is going and what their plans were. And they did have some of that. And they do want to encourage business. And so do I. I want our town to flourish. But I think we need to be very careful about the directions that we go and what we want it to look like. And again, I think anybody that wants, any business person that wants to invest in our company, in our town should be applauded. But I'm not sure if this is the right direction to go. And I know others on the street who own homes, Mr. and Mrs. Kuno and the Victorian, that they've worked on for many years and were turned down to have condominiums. Mrs. Mrs. Morgan's condominiums on the lot right across the street from this one because it wasn't historical enough. We have signs hanging from our light post saying that we're a historical area. Not to say that a food truck isn't historical or a brick and mortar wouldn't be, but I think we should think very carefully about setting a precedent in this man. So with that, I'm not really in favor of it as a homeowner, a property owner. And I don't believe that the others on Plumas Street are either. And I don't know that the folks who live right next to it would understand about being, but they, they do know. I think the traffic in the alley is already a concern. Not so sure about the porta potty, but I do know that they're trying their best to make things look good. And I applaud them for that too. I know they're trying hard, but they also knew ahead of time, and I did some research, they knew ahead of time before they bought this through the realtors, that this might be an issue. But now if they were building brick and mortar there from the beginning, that might be a little different. And I understand this is a stepping stone and I believe them, but it's not very favorable to the, the folks who own homes around me. And do we all agree that we, the three homes, the three property owners that are here tonight? So thank you very much for your consideration. We know this is a difficult decision and, but we have to think about our town and what direction we're going. Thank you.
You know, when we've had friends or family come to Willow's, they've always commented on the wide streets and the colonists of the town. They're well-maintained, vintage home. I think this would change it a great deal. Uh, the street sweeper goes down Sycamore Street, but it doesn't hit the side streets. And I think the trash generated will be much greater than what is supposed to, not just those three homes. Some of you that have been here a while can remember when students came through the high school, crossed the church landscaping and through by the Monday afternoon. I've been that far from the nose of them, the man that lived north of it. And that has changed. The church market across and off, the city closed off the other parking lot. And so now for years, they went north and south on the afternoon flow. And on hundreds on the north side of our house, there's no respect for private property on the sidewalk and trampled the grass on the south side of the house. When they came back, if they got rid of their refuse, they tucked cups in, if the ones that were left were tucked into the hedge, on the lawn, in the gutter, wherever they walked. Well, this is going to take it much further because houses have been built and expensive fences built. People are going to have to go up the alley by the post office, up Plumas Street. This is two blocks up, not one block. Uh, up the alley behind Plumas and by Lassen. Going over by the memorial hall and up by the high school. Then it'll go all the way down Sycamore, down Walnut, down Willow. That's a large area that's going to have refuse. And these aren't bad kids, but they're kids. And I think it's going to be a major problem. Another thing I think that'll be a problem will be the traffic. Traffic coming down Plumas, I mean, there's quite a bit, but it's okay. Coming up from the south is a major problem and we have complained about it. People stop or almost stop at the stop sign and then gun it up to Wood Street. And that's done a number of times a day. And if you have kids that are talking to each other, coming across the street, I think it's a liability issue, but that's something should be thought about also. And that, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Own houses on Plumas Street also. Brian Thomas. Uh, so I was thinking like what you were saying. We have nice Victorian houses around there and old craftsmen's and beautiful post offices, nice restaurant. And this is just going to be a trailer and a toilet dropped in the middle of downtown? That's approved. What's not approved? Uh, I was also wondering about the generator. Like, is it solar and battery or is it gas? And is it just going to be running all day loud? Does anyone know?
The hours of operation, I believe, end at 6:00 PM, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And it will be required to meet the ambient noise ordinance, the noise ordinance, so not exceed what the noise, any noise that's already out there now.
Right, so is it comparable to like, you know, when long, long crews come through and, and the leaf blowers to go? They're loud, but they're loud, right? But you hear it for 20 minutes. Am I going to hear this from like 8:00 AM to 16:00 PM? The generator?
It's, it's billed as a silent generator. I think that everyone would agree that nothing is silent.
Sure.
But advertised as a so-called silent.
There are now solar and battery generators. Yeah, that's it. It, it sounds like it would be shoddy compared to everything else.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Plumas and Sycamore.
Lori Pride, I apologize for being late. I was at another meeting. Um, I just have comments actually more of a, on the resolution that was provided. I think in the resolution for this item, it's talking about allowing the establishment of a mini mart style market. And I thought we were talking about a mobile food truck. So when I read the resolution on the last page that was in the packet, I don't know if it's been changed since the packet was posted online, but now therefore be it resolved that the planning commission of the city of Willow's does hereby find that the request to allow establishment of a mini mart style market is consistent with the general plan and the city of Willow's municipal code and hereby approves conditional use permit. Um, I don't believe we're talking about a mini mart style market when we're talking about a mobile food truck. So I think that the language in the resolution is a little bit questionable. I also just in reading through the conditions of approval, under additional conditions number 15, it talks about applicants will comply with downtown design guidelines. I spent some time on the city website looking for those and I found a downtown revitalization strategy, but I couldn't really find specific downtown design guidelines. And I didn't ask city staff for those. I don't know if those are available. But I just think there's been some language used. Um, also in part of the staff report, it talked about the uses to the north were commercial and it's residential. Talked about general commercial rather than central commercial. So reading it as a layperson, it was a little confusing. But I do think your resolution needs some look at the language if you think you're going to approve this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I can address a couple of those items. Yeah, if you choose to, uh, adopt the resolution, we will change it to mobile food facility as opposed to mini mart. And then the general plan identifies it as general commercial. The zoning is, is, um, central commercial. So there's some confusion, there's been some confusion over what is in general plan and the zoning do not line up. There is actually not a central commercial general plan design. So that, that has created some confusion over what is the zoning and what's the, what's the land use.
Okay, I think I had commented on that at the first meeting. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Please.
On the street will be greatly affected by that. We had someone that wanted to build an attorney's office there and they said on Plumas Street. And, and the parking behind, which would have been a wonderful thing because it would have, they've had plenty of parking. No one is going to want to build an office building across from food truck. I should say that most people would not want to build that across from a food truck. And that's, that's another possibility. I know that everybody doesn't agree with me, but a lot of people do and it's something that needs to be discussed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Is there anyone else? I close the public hearing at 6:27. Any questions? Well, I'm ready to vote.
I'm sorry, I'm ready to vote.
Is that for me? My, my. Can you hear me?
Uh, yeah. Uh, well, for starters, um, I would like to see them here. Um, but overall in general with the, a mobile food truck, I was wondering if, um, given that there's nothing in the code, if there was any way to, uh, table any conversation or, um, anything regarding, uh, permits until we had something a little bit more concise to where, uh, you know, if we do have more mo, mobile food trucks in the future, have it look a little bit more uniform? I'm not sure if that's feasible. I'm not sure if that's feasible, but I kind of wanted to get some thoughts on that.
You're looking at addressing it from a code point of view, saying, here's a standard rule for, for a food truck that you will meet as opposed to hitting them piece by piece.
Yeah, just because I feel if we go through with this, well, it's basically giving them the compost more of a, right? Like basically you're ready to go, keep pushing through if it goes through, right? If there was to be a motion. But I think overall, in general, since there's nothing in the code, I don't know if that's possible.
It would, it would take some time and a good amount of time probably to, to get that and, and established and, and passed. Probably more time than I would assume they're willing to wait on a decision for this. But it's definitely something that, that staff can look into and start addressing as perfect timing with the municipal code update that we're working on currently. And we're going to be looking to clean up a lot of definitions in general. So yeah, that's something we can look into, but continuing a meeting until that, that happens would probably be a long drawn out process to get that accomplished.
And you're entering into a, you're declaring a moratorium on a use and then only the council would.
I do have something to say, I think. I, I didn't mean to cut you off. I do, I also do applaud them for wanting to have a business and to want to do it legitimately. Because, you know, on my way here, I saw a taco truck on Humboldt Street that's operating without a license, you know? And nothing seems to be done and it seems like, so I applaud them for that. I don't however feel that, that where they want to place it is a good place for a taco truck. I happen to agree with everything that was said tonight. But I think that one way the city could generate more money is, and help the businesses that we already have trying to make a living, the food businesses, would be if we would start imposing fines or fees on the people that are operating illegally in our town. And it's happening every day and it's, it's ridiculous. That's all I have to say.
Well, I've had a lot of time to think about this and I actually was the one to add a lot of conditions to this particular application as I had went back to see what the city had done in the past, the prior planner had done in the past. And I thought that it were only fair that the conditions that were put on prior food, food trucks should also be applied to this one. Therefore, the additional conditions that I asked for on it. I thought about it a little bit longer and I realized that with those added conditions, what we basically are trying to do is make what is actually a mobile business into almost a brick and mortar by demanding that they have a restroom and demanding that they have handicap parking and so on and so forth. Mobile food businesses, from what I believe, were a business that, that started by being exactly that. Mobile, being able to go and, and park in certain areas and sell their wares or sell their food. And what we've done in the past years is we're trying to make a brick and mortar out of these, out of these mobile trucks when the reality is that they are nothing close. And they're not having to pay all of the expenses that your brick and mortar restaurants are paying. And I don't think it's fair. And so I think that Commissioner is absolutely right. I don't think we have clear guidelines for mobile food businesses. I think that it, it was, it was left, left up to the prior planner, of course, to come up with what she thought would, you would need to do to, to get these through and make them right and pass. But I don't think this is a road that Willows really should go down. Is allowing these mobile trucks to come and sit throughout the day and then pull away and leave a porta potty and a sink possibly sitting in the middle of a lot. It, it just visually is not a good look for our city. And so with that, I'm sure you can tell the way that I'm looking at this and the way that I'm feeling. Also, there, in my opinion, there is no way, and I didn't see where anything changed when it came to trying to make the carport look like it belongs in our historic district. I was kind of expecting to see a different structure when I got the agenda packet, but I'm not. And so I also don't believe that it meets the historic downtown guidelines. There was a comment from Lori and there actually is a City of Willows Historic Downtown and Wood Street Design Guidelines booklet that was done. It's old, but it's what we have. And this type of a business, again, doesn't meet those standards. That's my opinion on it. Is there any other comment?
Well, I just wanted to add a comment to what you mentioned about the mobile food trucks. So they have different names now. They have the semi-stationary food truck, semi-permanent, and they also have non-stationary mobile food trucks. And I think that's what you are talking about when you say, this is what I consider a food truck. I just kind of wanted to note now that, that that's, they have different names. For the different style of food trucks now, you can have street vendors that are right next to the sidewalk, pull up anywhere. And then you have the ones that are a lot more permanent. This one, right, it would be on a lot. I just kind of wanted to clarify that a little bit. But besides that, I mean, I just, I wish the bathroom was a little bit nicer. I don't know how I feel about that porta potty situation. I do like that they do, we do have that, you know, the annual review and then the brick and mortar. So they do have a plan. Yeah, that's really all I have right now.
Is there a motion on the floor?
All moves that we not approve minor use permit file number UP-24-02, West Sycamore Street at North Loop.
I second that. A motion has been made not to approve this conditional use permit. File number UP-24-02, West Sycamore Street and North Plumas. A roll call vote?
Yeah, I think we should be a roll call vote. I mean, I think that's, I think that's your call.
Nay.
Yes.
Aye.
Motion passes.
To not approve.
To not approve.
For members of the public commission and anyone else interested watching, this is, this decision is appealable to the city council.
The decision's, the decision's appealable to the city council if the applicant so chooses.
We make the comment after what you just said. It's, may I make a comment after what you just said?
Yeah.
I would encourage everybody here that is not for the food truck to attend the city council meeting because the planning commission voted no for the trading posts and the city council approved it. So if you feel strongly about this, you need to keep attending your meetings. The city council overturned us.
Discussion and action calendar. All matters in this section of the agenda are discussed and will be acted on individually. Individuals wishing to address the commission concerning any of these items are invited to make oral comments for up to three minutes, for up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the chairman and commission and not to staff and/or the audience. When the chairman calls for public comment, please raise your hand to be acknowledged while not required. The city requests that you please state your name clearly for the audio recorded, recording. By state law, the commission is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have any documentation that you would like distributed to the commission, please mail it to the city planner at 201 North Lassen Street, Willows, California, 959-88, or email it to bturner@cityofwillows.org. Item 7A, Retail Dispensary Cannabis Business Zoning Review.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners, Joe Bettencourt, Community Development Services. Something's coming before you. While considering the setback requirements for retail cannabis businesses, the city council at their May 28th, 2024 meeting directed staff to have the planning commission review the current allowed zoning and make a recommendation to alter zoning or keep the zoning as it is currently allowed. At this meeting, the council adopted resolution, adopted a resolution to change the setback distance requirements. And they did keep it at a thousand feet, but they eliminated churches and, and parks and other things. And so now it's just a thousand feet setback from preschool through 12th grade. A map of this new distant requirement can be found as attachment one. That also contains the, the current zoning of the City of Willows. The zoning in which retail cannabis businesses can currently operate with a conditional use permit or highway commercial and the combined zones of general commercial, light industrial and planned development and also general commercial planned development. Just to note, these, these mixed zones are actual zones within themselves. So it's not general commercial and planned development and this, they're actually zones that are considered combined zones, which mainly consist of, South Willows would be a planned development zone, highway commercials along our freeway exits and a little bit along, along Humboldt. That map as attachment one will give you detail of, of what that is. So with that, I'll, I'll take any questions that you guys have. I'll add one more thing too, that we, we kind of thought about, you know, the holding a public hearing, but we wanted to bring this forward just as general discussion to see the, the planning commission's interest, if it's anything on, on changing these zones or opening up more zones for, for these types of businesses.
Have you had any, anybody reach out to you through your RFP for this particular thing?
So the RFP process was concluded and we did have a, an applicant move forward and actually purchased, up to the point of purchasing land in South Willows before my time here. They did not end up being able to fund the project. Their permit has since expired. Since that time, we haven't released another request for proposals, basically soliciting for applications, but applications are still available. We've had someone that, we've had two, one, one of interest and one to kind of submit their initial stage for these, for that type of business for retail dispensary. So there's interest in it at this point. The biggest setback though is the, the current one that's got the application in is, is wanting to do it in an area that is, is not an allowed use. So it's not one of the current zoned areas. And the other person of interest is, is kind of waiting on a decision because their lot that they own is also not in one of the allowable zones for dispensary.
So this is a decision that we make without knowing where these areas are?
The, the, well, I wouldn't say that. I think it was meant to keep it along the highway or, or down in South Willows. That's, that's kind of the main zones where these, these areas are. The, the original problem, which you can still kind of see from the map, not a problem, but the setback limits when they were originally done, and I don't have the previous one, pretty much covered the entirety of Willows except for Basin Street Industrial Park down in that area and then Road 57 Highway Commercial. The issues we see with, with interest on these things is it's, the profit margins I don't think are there for companies to come in and build dispensaries. So they're looking to operate out of an existing building, which is very limited in the current zoning that's allowed and almost not nonexistent.
Are you talking about the new zoning with the, with the council's revision or the, or?
Yeah, but even with the, even with the council's revision, it's still basically, if you look at the map, the, the zone of influence from, I believe it's Walden there, hits a lot of the allowable highway commercial district that would be just to the east of I-5. And it touches those lots. So it pretty much knocks those out where there is, you know, the Starbucks complex that has some rental available, some, some spaces in that area. But because of the thousand feet on the new map, those areas are, are not allowed to operate within that distance. So in the recommendation, we, or sorry, in the staff report, we wanted to look at things of possibly general commercial, which runs along the north and south of Tahima. The central commercial district, which you guys know operates inside the general commercial along Tahima and some of the downtown, but a lot of the, the downtown area before Tahima or Butte actually is not allowed because it's close to a school. So looking at those areas to open up more existing buildings and rentals to, that would be in compliance with zoning. Cause at this point, with Basin Street, it's all full, you would need full development. Even with the highway commercial down by Road 57 out there, there's nothing that's currently developed for lease. So it would be kind of looking to open up lease, available buildings for lease options for these businesses.
So when I studied the map and it, not easy. The legend doesn't match the map colors and so on and so forth and really hard to read the street names. But what I got out of it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that it looks, it appeared to me that it opened up Tahima and some of Butte Street from Laurel South. And it opened up Tahima from Wood Street North. And it opened up Highway 162 or Wood Street East. And there are actually available existing.
Absolutely. They're just those zones that that area lies in are not current allowable zones. So the zoning doesn't allow you to operate a retail cannabis dispensary with a conditional use permit.
When I read it, I thought that it did. So am I wrong in assuming that it opened up Tahima Street from Laurel South and some of Butte Street?
So the zones are not within the sphere of influence, well, the setback limit of the school, but current zoning does not allow them to be in general commercial or central commercial, which would be that corridor that you touched.
But I'm saying the zones that they are allowed in.
No, it's highway commercial. So the only zones they're allowed in is highway commercial and then the actual mixed zones. See, when you see general commercial, planned development slash, 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 that's actually just a zone. And it would be the purple zone on the map, which is South, South Willows. So general commercial itself is not an allowed zone with a conditional use permit for a retail cannabis dispensaries. It, it's the actual combined zones on the map, which are purple. And the highway commercial is kind of an orange next to the freeways and then a little bit of the general commercial planned development, which is kind of the, the pink along Humboldt and Tahima.
So you're saying, no, it didn't open up Tahima Street from Laurel South?
Tahima Street has never been open because it's never been an allowed zone by the planning commission. So if the, if you guys wanted to make a recommendation.
That's a excuse because when I looked at this and I looked at it for a long time and many days. And I thought that those, that those were areas, anyway, okay, well.
Removal of the setback doesn't change the zoning.
No, I get, I get all, I understand all. No, I get, I understand all of that.
It is confusing to look at when you see those three zones all in there. General commercial, light industrial, but it's an actual combined zone. If you look at the legend at the very bottom, that purple color where it's CGML and PD, so that's general commercial, light manufacturing, and planned development. It's not stating that each one of those zones, because they are actually individual zones themselves. It's stating that the zone that is combined, which is the purple color of the southeast Willows there. So only those zones are called out. So it is very confusing, the fact that they're using other zones in naming combination mixed. Standard practice, as I understand it, to allow more flexibility of different kinds of businesses, say, that want to develop in the South Willows Industrial Park. So with that mixed use, you would be able to do those variations of those. But if something's zoned general commercial, you're not going to be able to do light manufacturing or other things. It needs to be that mixed use zone. So the current zones are those mixed-use zones that are mentioned in the staff report. And then the only other zone that is a standalone would be the highway commercial zone, which is by the freeways. And most of that, as stated, is blocked off by the radius of the school of Walden being there.
You don't have the map for you to put up on the screen.
You can Google it real quick, pop it up.
Sorry, Tara. No, but, well, you have, you have the map in your, on your, you don't, huh?
Well, do preschools count if they're held? I know churches they took up, but like, there's a preschool at the Christian church.
They do.
So, and then the Christian church. I don't know, does the Baptist church have a preschool anymore? No, I think they moved, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to see it in color.
Well, it was really hard to read because the legend colors are different than the map.
But then they can.
Peach or salmon. That didn't get corrected, huh?
Yeah.
Amos told me that, that Laco.
Even all the maps behind the counter. We're dealing with the maps that the city provides us. And so even the map behind the counter has, yeah, watermelon, peach, salmon, pink. You know, it is hard to.
To decipher which one's which.
Yeah.
And some of the colors on the map are right next to each other. And you have to really look close to see what changes.
Yeah.
I'm so disappointed in myself that I read that wrong. Because, so can you explain to me? Let's see where we are. So this is, yeah. So I'm guessing like this.
Yeah.
No, that's on, yeah. So I thought all of this, that's not within the zone? So show me right now where it's allowed. You can't do it in a way because of the school. So show me where all, where all the general commercial lies. Because I thought that it was.
Yes. Well. Yeah. These are the no, this is the no zones because of school, but not no because of zoning. Now, the zoning only allows it here and here. And it's here, although those are colored. And we're thinking, and that's, and that's the question is, you know, do you want to open up this zone to it? And then?
Yeah, we, we can have.
That would be next.
Yeah, yep, we can have public comment after your guys', any questions for, any additional questions for staff or anything. Again, I'll just say that this was discussed at the city council meeting when they were looking at 1,000-foot setback. They wanted to come to you guys and see if there was an interest in changing zoning to open up more available building space instead of somebody having to build a brick and mortar. So there's, we can go back with the recommendation today. We can, you know, continue it if you'd like to think about things. So, yeah, just a note on that.
So because this isn't a public hearing, I don't have to open?
No, no, you just go for public comment when you guys are done with your questions.
Are you guys ready for public? Is there any public comment? Sorry?
Thank you. I don't know if I'm public. I don't speak as a public, not as a press. Okay, Doug Ross, U D R S, as resident of Willows. There's three things came to mind. Hopefully, I can remember all three of them extemporum. But one of them is, there's a non-distribution of relevancy of the map for the audience that shows precisely the eligible places and the non-eligible places in either one or two colors. I read for the eligible places. I find myself as a press somewhat, I see something that I'm not looking at, if you will. Number two, the question arises in my mind is, what the relevance? And it's a rhetorical question because I understand it, so why I'm asking it. And the answer to that is, the city council tasked planning commission with something that already seems that they are complying. That they are asking, they subdivided the planning commission if they have any modifications. But I'm not seeing, and I know the distance is there. I'm not seeing the closure of the gap between what's already said and policy by the city council and what they're really asking the planning commission to do, which again goes back to the absence of a readable, relevant, well-circulated map. Even though a closure and not a public hearing, the planning commission closed off public comment in a non-public hearing. I think it's more humane for the audience that they be equipped with what I'm also not looking at, that they're also not looking at. It's not well-defined. If it's not well, and I've experienced that in my long tenure of covering the planning commissions and city councils, whoa. So what I say is, when I, when I see vague colors, or even more particularly, when I see colors translated into black and white, which I've seen public agencies do where you have to extrapolate the colors and then either thatch lines. But I tell you what, those dots and thatch lines become confusing very fast when they're in black and white. So cut to my chase for the night. My recommendation is to continue it for some future time of this particular discussion so that the audience and other relevant people can be equipped with a better map. And they can, instead of discussing it in terms of, you know, GP, that's whatever that combined zone thing was. Like highway commercial is too close to the school, it's fairly obvious. And, you know, there are preschools and schools here and there. But that's my, that's my recommendation is to come back at some future time with a relevant map that's more, better distributed so that the general public can look at it and say, yes, that's red, that's green, that's yellow, and that's black. And then there isn't any gray areas, if you will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Doug, just for clarification, are you referencing the map that's included in the agenda package? Sorry, Lori.
Well, see, the, I'm making a general reference to the discussion combined with the map that's in the package. Even though it's online, the audience here today, in my view, and I can't see direction, aren't equipped with what we're talking about, not on the screen.
Okay.
And the only people that saw what you saw was that. And that was a missing link for me.
Okay.
But the audience didn't clear well, wholly, you know.
Gotcha, yep.
Lori Pride. So my thoughts are just, I like the idea of, I'm not opposed to cannabis coming to the area. I think it's something that exists. I do like the idea of it staying out in the highway commercial in South Willows. I think my concern, if it got opened up to where we're starting to look at existing buildings, when Element Seven had proposed to come to Willows, and I was actively involved in that, their building plans were state-of-the-art, they were secure, they were well-lit. They were designed very well for some of the security that I think was included in the RFP that the city was desiring to see. So I guess my caution would just be, as we open it up to existing buildings, what is the standard going to be that the city puts forward in design review and guidelines? And what do we have that look like? You can drive through California, you can drive through a lot of states that have dispensaries, and there are a wide variety of what they look like and how they present themselves. And again, the concern that we talked about in the prior discussion of what our downtown looks like, what our general commercial entryways and stuff look like. I think as we talk about where, I would like to see the planning commission and the city look to keep the circles where we are keeping stuff on the main traffic areas of the freeway at the south end of town. And so our core population can choose to go avail themselves of those things if they want to, but they're not going to be impacted by traffic associated with it. And certainly the security and the lighting that the city in the past has put on those kind of developments, I think would be important to continue to consider. I think it's a business, you know, the future. I think it's here to stay. But I think if we're welcoming it to come to Willows, which the city's doing through the RFP process, I think it's just really important that we're very mindful, as I heard staff say, that we're trying to keep it on those highly-trafficked areas and not bringing it into the core downtown-type area. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Janice Smith. I agree. I agree it's coming. I agree it's a business. I would think that having a cannabis dispensary will make the purchasing of it more legal instead of illegal, not in the alley behind the post office. So I agree. But I also agree that what do we have in plan for our core downtown? And that was one thing I quizzed the city council about the last time I was here. What's the plan? You know, what are you helping, what are we going to build? And what do we want our downtown to look like? Yes, the dispensaries are here. And I would agree, they need to be secure and they need to be safe. And when you see or hear the ones that are, like over in Butte County, they are very secure and they are safe. The one out by Farmers, whatever, it's quite state-of-the-art. So we must be mindful of that. And we must be thoughtful about what we allow to come in. And it's coming, which is great, because it'll be a great income source tax. But I'm not quite sure of the existing buildings downtown, what it would take to make them state-of-the-art. And we don't need any more criminal activity.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Well, I agree. I've been attending some of the city council meetings, and I know that they want business. And I know that they want the tax to pay and the vote to go through and all of that. But I don't want to be desperate, Willows. I don't want, I want to draw in the kind of businesses that we can be proud of. I agree, these businesses are here, but they don't all look like the one at Farmers. I've become very aware of all of them as I've been driving this summer. And, you know, that's, that's the exception. That's not the norm. And so I think that there's a place for them, and I don't think it's in our downtown area whatsoever. Not at all. We need to start coming together. I almost feel like we're at odds with the council. I'm surprised they even brought this to us, because when we make a decision, they've been reversing it. I think we need to really come together and start, what do we want? And let's, let's get on a positive road and let's draw in what we really want, what will bring in people instead of bars on windows and things like that.
No, I'm okay with continuing it. And if we could look further on the map, just the general commercial area, that dark pink on the map that we were talking about, that's a go, right? That's currently a go? Or it's not?
No, no, it is. So the, so all of, no, you're fine. All of the Tahima Street area from Central Commercial that goes down Sycamore, up and down Tahima is no. And then the general commercial that lines the north and south borders of that central commercial, kind of salmon pink color, is a no-go. So you're really looking at, right off of the freeway at 162 is an allowable zone at highway commercial. You're looking at your planned development, which is general commercial, light manufacturing, planned development is the purple that is down by Basin Street Properties, that southern tip. And you're looking at the, what would be the east side of I-5 in between Humboldt to the south of 162. That sliver is highway commercial and also the other planned development of general commercial planned development. So those are the currently, currently the only allowed areas. And then we've got our highway commercial down by Road 57. So kind of the edges of the freeway, a little bit of the freeway access, and then South Willows and the Basin Street Industrial Complex area located out by Rumiano Cheese, and then the highway commercial by Road 57.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
I think that there are two types of dispensaries that you see. And the state-of-the-art dispensary without the bars on the windows and things like that. I don't know if they use a different kind of glass and they're able to not have to use bars in their windows. But to me, when we have people stopping in off of the freeway and they come into a town and they see bars on windows and things like that, it gives a perception that we have high crime here. And I don't think that that's what we want people to think about our town. We want them to continue to love our town, our wide streets, all of our trees, and all of those things. And to start making decisions out of desperation and just allowing different businesses to come in that really don't meet the standards that our planning commission has set for us in the past would be a detriment. that our planning commission has set for us in the past would be a detriment, I feel, to our community. Um, so on this, I'm going to say the city council had an opportunity when they changed the municipal code by taking off parks and churches and they care. They also had the opportunity at that time to make a modification to the districts. And I'm going to stand by them with the thousand feet from schools and not make any modifications to the district. That would be my where I would go and I guess that would be just a no action type.
Yeah, you can you can make a motion so with with we'll be going to the
Take no action.
We'll be going to the council again with your guys' recommendation, of course, so you can make a recommendation um uh to to keep zoning us currently allowed. You can make, you know, if you wanted to keep it the same. So they wanted to, like I said, their idea to come forward and um see see what you guys wanted to recommend, if you were, you know, interested in a change to open those up or keep it the same. Um, so there's, you can definitely just say, uh, you can make the motion to to keep that you guys would would recommend that I go back to the city council and their your recommendation is to keep the zoning the same would be allowed.
I'll hold out for the um the better. I think I'll hold out for the state of the art. And that's what we need to start thinking about when we're making decisions for Willows, better, better than what we're allowing. So, Jerry, would you like to make a motion?
I I would. I'd like them, I'd like to make a motion to not alter the current zoning that retail cannabis businesses are allowed to operate under a conditional use permit. So.
I'll second. I think the city council needs to hear something from us. It's a good way to give a chat message.
Now I'm drawing a blank. What am I supposed to say? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, Carrie? Item seven B, revising the architectural board of review municipal code covers, recommended action, re, oh, sorry.
Okay, uh, yeah, so this is, we're looking at revising the architectural board of review municipal code relating to colors. Um, I'm not going to speak a whole lot on this. I think everybody's was pretty aware, well, the committee's pretty aware of kind of the ambiguous uh current code that we have, creating discrepancies and issues on on what exactly these definitions mean as they relate to color. Um, so we're looking to kind of clarify and through the committee's direction and working, it's kind of been on a path to get a a range of neutral colors that are specific in nature. So that way there's a less less chance for error or room for interpretation. Um, so we provided the uh planning commission with swatch colors. Um, it it we've kind of worked towards the neutral base. Um, so just want to have that discussion. And again, this is going to be updating the municipal municipal code. So we've got time to get this worked out and get exactly what you want. Um, so just wanted to bring it to you for general discussion if you had anything. In other words, talk about possibly kind of picking through colors or or doing that. So just want to uh open it up for you with any discussion. I did include a red line draft kind of uh change in language that we could recommend for the ordinance as well. Um, so any modifications that you guys would want to do with that, you can you can let me know as well.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Uh, well, I I like the physical, um, having like a physical visual of the colors. I think that there's enough options here for people to feel like they have enough to choose from.
Yeah, and I did want to mention that. We would have these colors available at our office with these swatches for for people to go, hey, these are the the pre-approved ones. So hopefully streamlining that for them and us and you. I'm sorry, and I do want to make one more comment. We did include, these were some of the uh provided colors online, the neutrals. Um, the swatches contain a lot more of those. Uh, but again, if there's you find other collections that you're interested in seeing, um, or just want to work off of that. But I did want to let you know that the ones we found online were not nearly as as much as what is involved in those swatches. So the the staff report does not include all of the colors that the planning commission has.
Okay, um, so I'm hoping that we can kind of go away from here with some of this with some instruction sort of speak.
Yep.
Where we can each take time and go through the neutral tones on our own and then meet again and um have, you know, bring forth the colors maybe that we think should be pulled from from the um acceptable colors. The other thing was, I think we need to decide on a percentage that we want to use for allowing trim colors. And that, when I say that, what I mean is, and I'm just going to give it for instance, um Chevron's branding colors are red, white and blue. How much of that in paint color do we want to allow them on their building? 10%?
To call trim, basically?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Absolutely. Keeping that clear so we don't have a 60% trim color.
Mm-hmm. And we probably, when we're looking at the colors, decide maybe if a color doesn't work as like a base coat on a building, maybe that color works as a trim color. I don't know if we want to get that specific where we have acceptable, some acceptable trim colors or, you know, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it it does. Um, yeah, and that that can be something we look into or taking neutral colors that are maybe a little more flair than the planning commission is looking for and making those trim colors or something.
Maybe a color that you would throw out as a base color, maybe it's acceptable as a trim color.
And and again, too, with with specific things, if somebody wanted to go try to paint a lime green uh building, they would have the right to bring that to you guys. They're just not going to get the go ahead off the gate, right? So there there's going to be some one offs, there's going to be, I'm going to, there's going to be different things like that. So there's always that, um, you know, these are going to be the pre-approved ones. So just if they're if they're there, that would be, hey, these are good to go. And everything else would still be be coming before you. But um, but yeah, that's okay. So we'll get the the trim percentage set up as some sort of standard that we can find for the next council meeting on that as well.
Okay. And then I have some questions for you, and I know this has been something that's been kind of gone on for a while. I just wanted to remind you um for the next meeting is um, is a permit needed to paint in the commercial downtown? Um, I was under the impression that you really didn't need one unless you got a building from this. So if if you don't have an answer, if you can find out.
I, so I will speak to the the architectural board of review. Um, painting of a building would, it the the way that it's worded is with or without a permit. So whether a permit has to be pulled to do it, wouldn't matter if it falls under the category of an architectural review. Does that make sense? So even things that don't require a permit would could still be subject
So how do we get that word out?
Standards. Um, I think I did put it in our newsletter. We're trying to do little things like that. Um, but yeah, you know, and it is, um, you know, something that just people have, you'd have to be aware of it or we would see it and go, hey, that's not, you know, you need to go through this process for it. So um, that that is a tough one. If they're not pulling a permit, if they're pulling a permit, we see it, right? And we we get to, we get to make that call and make sure they're, you know, hope steer them in the right the way through the planning process and let them know it's not just a building permit. When they don't have a permit, it's, we have to see it, we've got to be notified, those kinds of things. So it is, it is tough, for sure.
If you get a code enforcement call on a color that's starting to be painted and it doesn't fall within the neutral tones, is the city going to act on that?
Uh, we can definitely, yeah, that we have the right to to do that.
And what will the teeth, that was another question that I had, which I don't know that we have anything. So what would the teeth in the game be?
What we're looking to do is sharpen those teeth because they are very dull at this point um with our municipal code update. So I know code enforcement um has been working to make sure we get these these fines implemented. And speaking back to to Sherry as well, even with those kinds of things with the um pop-up no business license um deals, you know, we're we're going to be ramping up enforcement on those. What are our main part would be to, you know, try to work with the property owners to let them know that this isn't a licensed business, you know, and and work that way. We've also worked with the health department on one of the ones you referenced because they they do have a little more teeth on, you know, if you're operating in unsafe food conditions, it's different than not having a business license and operating in a zone. So we've been trying to work with them as a little more of an enforcement agency with it. Uh, but we're, I won't say that they're good. I can't speak to exactly what our different fines and processes are for code enforcement abatement issues. But I know that we're focusing on our our code enforcement and being heavily involved in getting more penalties and fines and assessments.
We need those.
For, I know, absolutely. Um, you can write letters all day long, um, and even working with property owners to not somebody have somebody on their property. If they go to the next spot and continue to operate, if it's a mobile mobile business, we haven't solved anything at that point. So making sure that we've got avenues to, um, because it's not fair to other businesses who operate with those licenses, right? That's that's the, that's the whole thing. Um, you hear a lot, well, they're just trying to make money and do this. And yes, well, that's everybody's objective in business and it's just the process being followed. So know that we are trying to work on that and be more heavily involved. Hopefully, but we've set up a plan to do code enforcement on some weekend drive-bys and stuff or after hours. Um, because that's when a lot of occurs. And even when we get complaints, we still have to deal with the either the owner because we don't have the business information a lot of times or or go through other resources. So a long-winded explanation on that, we are, we are really working um on enforcement itself, but having the the fines and the penalties in place in our municipal code is going to be the what they listen to at the end of the day when they get these notices. So that is a been a a heavily um talked about and worked on part of this process with the municipal code update.
As these items come up, I know we have a company right now that's rewriting our municipal code. As these items come up, are they getting notice that this is something that's a problem?
They're they're
Like the food trucks and the
Yes, we will. We make them aware of priorities that we hear from you, from from city council, from the public. Um, so we make those high priorities for them. Um, and and, you know, things like the the color. We're still waiting on some of the documents to come back for review, but as they do their once-overs, we review and then we send it back. And we'll be bringing those things to the planning commission for your guys' review um to be a part of that stakeholder process as well. So.
It just seems that we'd be prudent as these types of things come up to let them know.
Oh, no, we do. Yeah, no, we we are heavily, like I said, the code enforcement thing was already going through just the building process itself because we ran into this issue um a lot of times before. So and obviously with the architectural review board, the colors, all those things that we find issues with, business license definitions, things like that, um, are all looking to clear it up. But, you know, it's, it's always, um, you know, from your guys' perspective, too, as you see things, you know, let us know. And I know you guys already have on multiple things, but yeah, let us let us know what you see issues in and we can make sure and get that hammered out um before a review process or anything.
Hmm, thank you.
Yeah, always. It's, so if it's a new they they ha, it's available online, so it can be sought at after. And a new business would go through a business license process that would go through planning first, um, and those those kinds of things. If it's a leased building or something, uh, and they're not doing anything, that's pretty smooth. But if they're applying for, you know, especially building a new building, we'd have that process through our building department. But if a new um place is coming in and they want to do new signs, you know, that would require coming here if it's needed as a condition. A lot of the sign, we're pretty tough at sign ordinances, so we would implement those things through our business license review process through planning. Who's been? Yeah, yeah, that, well, the main problem, I think, is the the people that have been there and we, you know, they aren't going through that process, but they decide to paint a building and go, I'm going to paint it, you know, highlighter green and don't think there's a problem with it.
That was one of the things that we talked about and the city is acting on, Joe, is that educating the community in some of the most broken codes.
Yeah.
Harking on your lawn, living in a trailer on the side of the house.
Yep.
Just painting any color you want. And so the city has been proactive in educating people. I know the fire chief put out a really nice letter for weed abatement.
Yeah.
That was posted on Facebook. I'm sure it was on the city website. I like to push for some of this stuff to get in the paper.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because not everybody, you know, goes to those places. But I know there's an expense to it, but maybe it would be worth the expense or maybe we could get our friend Doug here to take care of that for us.
Uh, I think one thing that we can do to get it out there would be a more social media presence. We do put it in the newsletter, but again, you know, the the more the merrier out there. So maybe um, you know, bi-weekly publications of what we do in the newsletter is kind of the, did you know this municipal code, you know, kind of thing? And push those things out there um to make people aware. Um, and also make the public aware that they see things, you know, give us a call.
We can almost make a game out of it with a prize.
Yeah, find the find the ugly house on the block. We, well, that would be, you know, that's what we aim, we want to do that. We don't want to go out and code enforce. It costs us money. It got, you know, abating things costs money. We want to get that responsibility and that knowledge out there. It's the resources and ability to do that. But with social media and those things, I think we can make a valiant effort of getting things out that way at no, at minimal staff time and no cost.
Probably also flyers or maybe senior nutrition center have
Try to try to attend events.
The chamber, the chamber. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Um, so um, the simplest form of my question is that green and yellow building, that's not a nice four flats, I believe it is, that uh just off Laurel Tahama. I wonder, uh, some say kind of came to the meeting hanging their head, feeling they've done a little wrong, you know, never straightened out, never given their parameters. So presuming that this is to equip the future businesses, uh, aspirants, the general public who might uh uh protest a particular paint scheme. Uh, so my conception is that there's going to be, while not a full Sherwin-Williams paint chart, uh, the paint chart that's going to be provided is going to be clear enough so that the average non-professional person could interpret it in their own uh, without having to come to people who work, you know, who are the city, if you will, planning the city council. The arch, which is the architectural, designing board, as I understand it, Simon Finetti. So uh, this this is in the direction of equipping people as um, I've never fully understood why on controversial issues, the audience that comes to the city council meeting on the script with the agenda packet, at least for that particular item on request. And the screens are frankly hard to see. I know they're well thought out out and everything else, but quite honestly, um, the the city, and I'm going to delete the word Willow, and I'm going to put in a generic past of mine covering cities, i- it is not always as uh uh, fol- following an expression by the members of the public that this and that and this and that need to be upgraded so the public has a good experience. They don't have to strain on the screen. They don't have to be in the dark as to whether if they choose colors or have a business license, whether they have to come before administrative staff or the planning commission and so forth. So um, would, with all that in mind, would you mind, perhaps Mr. Turner or Bettencourt, uh, how that green and yellow building would have fit better the uh the person who developed that uh, um, expectations of not having to make the wrong choice and then reverse it? Could that be used briefly as a model for how it would have worked otherwise? Would he, the person have seen, well, I'm going to paint it green and I'm going to paint it yellow, but but I don't know exactly how wide the trim should be, so I'm just going to take a shot at. So he takes a shot at it, he's got a nice green building, he's got a yellow building, and then someone comes up and says, and he said, he says, it's not right as people hear it. They, and I experienced the same thing with the zoning thing that I expressed previously that um public agencies in general are not as uh have to serve the public as, A, the assert in the general in the generalities that they publish and B, when it comes down to idiosyncratic situations that confront people and give them a dilemma, I, I find, at best I give public agencies a C minus grade in compliance. It's kind of like, okay, we'll do this, but we'll, the agencies say, well, we'll do this, but we'll do this our way. My, if I were in charge, and thankfully I'm not, I'd make it a real sort of kindergarten through fourth grade charts, not charts and data like Evan Hudson's, um, stated that he'd like to see. I, I think I can include my remarks there. And if you don't want to, uh, go the route of using the, green and white model, I'm asking it more as a rhetorical question, but, um, I just, I, if I were going to, let's say I was a multimillionaire and wanted to build a new world, what I'd like to be able to do is come into City Hall or online, receive A, B, C, and D, to be clear, concise, and that's no question in my mind, was it possible or was it, uh, on the grid? If you get where, if you get where I'm going.
I think the city's been working on that somewhat.
I'm not accusing the city of not working on it. I just want to say that, um, as a journalist who's been at this longer than I can imagine, that, um, when I hear we're working on it or we're, we're doing our best, I'm not accusing anyone of not doing their best. I'm just saying, it gets very repetitive to me when the Willows public, which I've been covering, uh, Willows for twenty-six years, and general government agencies in Ryan County, that the data that's put out there is generally for professionals, not for the little guy or little gal. I'll just put it that, at that. When you have to go through and read agenda packets and it starts working like Sanskrit, it's not serving the public. I don't care, you know, they had CA or whoever the person is at the top of the administrative firm, says, well, we're doing our best, uh, um.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to say one more thing. I'd like to say the phrase, if I can remember it, good, better, best. Make, uh, make the good, better, and make the better best. That is a quote from one of our interns from the Tans decade, uh, Cass Towns, out of the standing University of California, going to spend the summer in, uh, at the Mirror.
Thank you.
I'd put up with this quote. But that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, um, item seven B, the architectural board review of the colors, um, and may, uh, have a motion to, how do we do that? We want, we want to have time to review and bring it back to another meeting?
Yeah, continue the item, uh, to the next planning commission meeting and we'll, we'll bring back some of the information you requested on the trim percentages and things of, things of that nature. And you guys can, um, give us the opinions on, on colors that you were provided and where you want to go from there. And also any, like, if you've got any municipal tweaks on that red line that I did, it's only a sentence or two saying we're going to adopt these Sherwin-Williams, uh, or equivalent neutral colors. But, um, yeah, those, those things. So, yep, continue for further discussion.
So can I have a motion to continue?
I move to motion the revising architectural board review of the municipal code color.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item seven C, commission direction, mobile food trailers and entryway zones.
Okay, uh, so this is one, um, I feel like we're going a little bit backwards and that's due to, due to us over here. Um, so we want to look at the, the entryway district. Um, and we came forward with an, with an item that, um, asked to consider a, a food trailer, a, at, at the opinion of the planning commission, a cafe, restaurant, or catering shop, basically. Um, we wanted to come back. The, the past precedent has been that these units have been considered mobile businesses. Um, and so if it is considered a mobile business, and I'll like talk about this Byron a little better if you want to, uh, that, that would, would not be an allowable use. That would be a prohibited use in the entryway district.
So what we've got here is we've got a map and yes, again, the colors are kind of hard to read, but that blue, bluish-green along the I-162, that, those are the properties that are zoned into. And we'll, I've got more, I can go back. And then cur, so currently. So the entryway district is intended, is embedded in the code, intended to apply to arterial streets leading into downtown where a mix of commercial office and residential uses is appropriate in an aesthetically appealing corridor, in which new developments and modifications to existing developments shall occur in accordance with the design guide. Permitted uses and uses permitted with a conditional use permit are intended to be compatible with residential uses within and adjacent to the e-district. So this is not a complete list of permitted uses, but permitted uses include cafes, restaurants, catering shops, um, office, office professional type offices, like doctor's offices, dance studios, general food and retail. So, you know, you've got your mini markets, but, and other uses in which, in the opinion of the planning commission, are similar to those uses. That really gives the planning commission somewhat carte blanche to find that other uses, if they find they're similar to those uses, they can consider them as a conditional use permit. Prohibited uses that are actually, uh, listed out in, in the code are automobile service stations with and mini markets with gas stations. So no gas stations, no bars or cocktail lounges, no adult entertainment, no, uh, uses with drive-through windows, so no real fast food. And then the question that we're asking, outside sales and transient or mobile business operation. So we've got some, there, there isn't really a whole lot of definition in the code, but we do have the health and safety code, which defines a mobile food facility as any vehicle used in conjunction with a commissary or other permanent food facility upon which food is distributed at retail. So at this time, staff is seeking direction on whether a mobile food trailer can be considered a similar use to a cafe or restaurant. If the planning commission chooses not to find that a mobile food, food facility can be considered similar, they would therefore not be permitted into the entryway district. We wouldn't take an application for, for a food, a food trailer in the, in the entryway district. It would never make it to the planning commission. And then I'll finish again the map, see where we're talking. So we're seeking, we're seeking your guidance.
Okay, really? No, I don't hear it. The public comment and then we, um, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Watch out for that chair.
So Lori Pride. Well, this, um, item had come before the planning commission as a design review on Wood Street. And at the time, it was called a mobile food unit and it was only here for design review, which perplexed me. I think you have in your packet some of the comments that I provided to Mr. Bettencourt. I mean, obviously it's been the precedent of the city, as it says in the staff report, that mobile food trailers have been considered mobile businesses. And in your public hearing item tonight, a food truck was considered a mobile business. If there was any thought by staff or the commission that it could be considered a cafe, a restaurant, or a catering shop, that same thought should have been applied to your first agenda item and they would have been a permitted use in a central commercial zone. So to me, and, and I appreciate, Joe, you saying that, this is kind of backwards, I believe, coming at the end of the agenda in general. A mobile food business is a mobile food business. It's prohibited in the entryway zone. I think to even find it as a similar use to a cafe, restaurant, or catering shop doesn't make sense to me for one, because it's not a brick and mortar building. And the entryway code prohibits, um, drive-through windows. I was actually on the city council when we designed the entryway district. And the thought process of the council at the time was that we didn't want Wood Street, right or wrong, now that we're in 2024, we didn't want Wood Street to just be neon lights and fast food all the way down. We wanted it to retain the charm of the Victorian homes, sort of that residential component. And so that was really the intent of the entryway zone when it was put into effect in the late, like, nineteen ninety-seven or ninety-eight or ninety-nine, somewhere in there. So I think we've already answered our own question in terms of how we define a mobile business unit. A food truck is a mobile business prior, based on your prior discussion. Um, so I think, you know, to, to consider something different for a one-off application is, is a dangerous path that we can go on as a city. I mean, to me, it's a prohibited use. Absent any major changes to the zoning, I would say it should continue to be a prohibited use. I'm just trying to figure out the wording of the motion. Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Jan Smith. And I think that this is a good direction because you have to stick to the design. You can't just wander off in direction. So, you know, sticking to your definitions of what the code is, is a good thing. And I think that will help the city go in the direction that we want it to see. And I think, um, what Doug, Doug said, you know, having these things, and we're working on it, having these things in an easy way to come in as a business and say, okay, this is the zoning. I can do this here, this here, and this here. And this, these are the steps to get it done. So when we do get developers coming in, it's not difficult to figure out what I can do where. So I think this is a great direction to go. I think we should stick with what we have. I think we should be consistent in our codes and our zones and take care in setting precedence about where they should be. And mobile food trucks are great. And I think somebody recommended that, gosh, what if we had a place where we had the availability to have them all there and have, like in Redding, had a night where they all came and it was an actual event? You know, Saturday night and they all came to a specific place and it was a gathering point of all kinds of different types of food trucks. And that might be something we can look at in the future at the, at a place. So anyway, I think what Lori said is the right direction. I think we need to stick with what we have.
I think that one of the problems that we've been facing is that we're always asked to piecemeal things instead of really having a vision. But I'd like to make a motion that a mobile food trailer cannot be considered a compatible use in the entryway zone.
I was going to say-
Oh, I think it's okay.
It's okay. A motion's been made and seconded.
You have some more discussions?
No, I'm good. Cause, no, I'm fine. Um, I'm losing the- All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Comments and reports? Any comments and reports, Carrie?
Um, I could really use some training.
Yeah, yes. And I know we've been talking about-
I know I keep saying that, but-
No, no, and it's, we, we, um, I know the resources are there. I know Amos has some resources too, so I'll work with him on, on getting those to you guys. I think it'd be, it's good for everybody, right?
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll be watching right along with you. It's never, never a bad thing. So we will, we will move that forward.
There is a, I don't know if you, 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 if you don't have it, there's a planning commissioners association, you can search for them online, and they do have a lot of good materials.
I actually didn't make it that far. Yeah, so, and we'll send you guys, we'll send you guys links to that, so that way you all have the same thing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or discussion?
Yeah, actually, I just wanted to say something. Um, is there any way at a certain point in time where the planning commission could get with the city council, with the city council and, um, kind of just touch base? Um, I feel like you've mentioned it quite a bit, that we're almost on opposite, you know, view on things. Um, I know that they've been having workshops, right? Um, and their goals and stuff, and I did see that on the website. But I think just touching base with them and just seeing them face to face, I mean, not on a regular basis, but, you know, just speak out. I think that'd be great.
I'll, I'll definitely look into that. I know we've got the Brown Act, um, to follow to make sure we're not having a meeting without noticing or anything like that. So, but we'll definitely, even if it is a, a publicly held meeting, you know, that, that could be one way to do it, as like the workshops are done, right? It's just more, you know, and that-
It would be, it'd be called a joint meeting of the planning commission and the city council.
Yep.
And then we could agendize, you know, whatever either group wanted on it.
To get, you know, more, more aligned on, on where everybody's at and where we want to go moving forward. So we'll definitely look into that for you. Uh, our man Amos will be back hopefully soon with all of his Brown Act expertise. So, um, we'll, we'll figure out the best way to do that and work with you guys in the city council on, on that as well. Um, probably the, uh, step would be just a general discussion with them or, or, or something at, at one of their next city council meetings, so.
If it's possible. I know they also do, you know, their side meetings and stuff like that. I know, you know, there might, might be a crunch time or whatever, but-
Yeah.
I mean, just-
Or even if it's something, meeting one-on-one, that we're not having a public meeting to discuss things or, or things of that nature. So we'll, we'll get some options and lay that out and see what you guys, you know, what we all think would work, work best on that for technical direction.
I want to thank you for bringing that up because, you know, like when we made our one decision and then they just overturned it, it's like some of the council members were like telling us how we thought in this meeting when nobody, there was just no, no communication. And it was like, what do you mean you think that we think this way and that's why we voted this way? So I thank you for that. And also, I mean, we're trying to pass a tax and I think it's important that we're all, the city's trying to pass a tax. I think it's important that we're all communicating and, and not on opposing sides, but working for, we all want to see Willow to be successful. We all want, all want to see it grow. We want to see Willow support itself. So that's what I'd like to see too. Thank you.
Do you have anything further?
Uh, just a general update. Um, uh, just wanted to let you guys know, we've gotten some emails through building, a Jack in the Box is, is very eager to get moving. They want to, uh, start construction, late fall kind of things. We've got some planning stuff to get, do you guys believe on sign mainly?
In the wood. The, the, they've asked for too many time extensions for staff to approve. We've got to go to the planning.
Oh, an extension we need to approve another one.
After go so far, then it has to come. Okay, yep. So we'll be bringing that forward. But the good news is, is, you know, I was really nervous after the twenty-dollar hour minimum wage. Like, oh no, are they going to totally stop this? But they've, uh, are, are getting, they had a couple of, uh, reviews with Caltrans, um, but their civil stuff's like good on our end of it, moving through. And, um, so hopefully small revisions and they sound like they're ready to go. So that's exciting news. I already covered this, but I wanted to let you guys know, the code enforcement stuff, um, for the planning side, that we're really teaming up with environmental health and working with our code enforcement people. And not just on food trucks, we've got other issues, a couple of buildings that we're, we're working through the process of, uh, unsafe living conditions and helping these people, um, get, get in a better place than where they're at. We also, uh, work with HHSA in those situations too, when it's a landlord tenant issue, but, you know, the landlord's not willing to fix things. We try to find alternative housing and things of that nature. But we're really looking to amp up and focus on the businesses operating with no permits from, uh, environmental health, no business license from us, not improved zone. So we'll be looking to, to up that. Um, anything else, Byron? Oh, yeah. So, uh, just want to make everybody aware that election packets, uh, for the, the city council are available. Um, so I know you guys are all eager to go pick yours up and you in the audience. Uh, but yes, they are available, uh, for the, for the city council. Um, I believe four out of five of our council members are, are up right now. So I'll get that out to the, the public, whoever's listening and, and to you guys to know. So, um, you can come just in our office here at two oh one North Lassen and ask for any information on that if you're interested.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to adj, adjourn Willow's planning commission regular meeting of July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four at seven forty-seven. I survived.